It is 5:15 on Tuesday, November 16th. Time for regular city council meeting in Harlan, Iowa. So I will call the meeting to order. Gene, if you would please take your roll call.
Kroger, here.
Blatt?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Rudolph?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Thank you. You all received the agenda ahead of time. No questions. Gene?
I do have a correction. On item number D, that should read...
Two D or four D?
Oh, I'm sorry. Four D.
I'm sure item number D.
Annual urban renewal report. It shouldn't say tip and debitness certification. It should say urban renewal report.
Hold up the title.
Okay. With that change then, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion?
Motion by Rudolph.
Second.
Second by Kroger.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Please state any conflicts of interest to theorize tonight. Takes us on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the November 2nd council meeting, claims list number 1254 in the amount of $210,680.42, expenditure and revenue reports for the month of October, and the police statistical report for the month of October. And you've received all that information in your packet. Any questions on that information tonight? Okay, and look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Christensen.
Second.
Second by Peterson.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Okay, and this is the time and place for the public hearing regarding the sale of city-owned property located at 1901 Hawkeye Drive in Harlan, Iowa. Is it Driver Avenue? I wish that was Hawkeye Avenue.
Um, yeah, Avenue on the agenda here.
Okay.
It's just Drive.
Okay, anyway, we'll call it Avenue.
Well, it's crazy. My agenda says Avenue.
Says Avenue down below. In the A, item A, it's... Anyway, doesn't matter. Hawkeye Avenue. So this is the... The hearing is open. Gene, you want to do a brief outline again of what we're...
For the past few years, which all of you have been a part of, you as a council, Public Property Committee as well, we've continued to evaluate the north half of the city's presence out at 1901 Hawkeye. And the best way to utilize that initial investment as incubator space. And through just a lot of great collaboration, looking at a lot of faces around the room, including Todd as well as Ken, that the collaborations resulted in a 2021 investment of into business and youth as a new type of incubator space is essentially what it is. So it's taking the north half of that facility, allowing Chamberlain Industries to remain there because of its important and vital link to the business and industry needs out there, and provides for flexible, adaptable space for career academy, exploratory, which are some of the same kind of terms and visions that Dr. Kenny shared when he shared this two weeks ago. And that's the intent, to have this transacted and transferred by January 1. Our current tenant there, certainly is... Todd's been vital in helping them secure other space. In fact, I think there was article in recent paper, or maybe today's paper, about Farm Table securing other space that concerned. So a lot of dominos have fallen or are falling in the right direction here. So that's maybe a little more background than you wanted, yet that's the intent. And I would again thank, you know, thank you as council for continuing to explore this and also seeing the... Understanding the original investment and what this continued investment looks like. So appreciate that. And I think we'll all look back in 10 years, quite frankly, and say, this was very impactful.
Anybody in the room or online have any comments, questions regarding this proposal?
This is time to mention what the... Part of the resolution, what the other part of the agreement is, if they were to do part of the area. I think that's important to probably say in the public hearing, right?
Yes, at any point. Happy to expand on that. You know, it was touched on and certainly should focus on that more, or be sure that's very clear to folks. Couple of key elements, I believe what you're referencing, Troy, one is that, which I alluded to, the Chamberlain Industries stays in that space, which is part of the purchase agreement. And then secondly, an option in that purchase agreement is that if the Community College looks to divest that space or their direction or vision changes, that the city has first option on that space for the same price of a dollar. So in terms of, as far as win-loss or what's the...
And that's the entire building, not just the north half, right?
That is correct. So further kind of protecting everyone's interests and certainly the community of Harlan. Is that mature?
Yes, I think it's important, people. I don't think we probably said that clearly enough, maybe. I mean, we probably knew what the language was, but maybe not the rest of the public. So I think it's good to let them know, here's why the price is a dollar, and our option backed the other way for a good business-to-business partnership, right?
Mm-hmm.
Have we have had other public input or comments brought to City Hall?
We have not. I checked with the girls today if they've gotten any. If I haven't been here.
I've... I guess of any of the rest of you, I have not. I've engaged in a number of conversations about it, yet in terms of just unsolicited public questions, concerns, I have not. Dr. Kenny and Iowa Western have certainly been good to work with through this process to get us to this point, so... It's always nice when both parties are interested in doing the same thing. If there are no other questions, then I look for a motion to close the hearing.
Motion?
Session by Kroger. Second by Shaven.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. At this time then, that takes us to Resolution Number 2473 to approve the sale of 1901 Hawkeye Avenue to Iowa Western Community College. And also includes the purchase agreement. So that will both be rolled into this resolution. So look for a motion to approve Resolution 2473.
Second.
Motion by Blatt. Second by Rudolph.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Good project to get moving. On to other business then. We need to review the HDC Development Licensing Agreement. And you've got that in your packet. And again, Gene, you wanted to do a quick overview of what this agreement entails.
Well, certainly, this is a carbon copy, parallel with during a large construction project, this would be with the Hanson House expansion down in North Harlan along Dyce Street. The contractor, which is HDC, is... May need some staging area for trusses, walls throughout the winter months. So it'd be identical to what we've done in Prairie Fire, to make use of some public land just across the street in this case. And that's what this licensing agreement, City Attorney's, bless this as well, and just for a visual, once again, this is in your packet. So here's the Hanson House. To the south here is where all the new expansion is taking place. And just across the street to the north, which is one lot, and then just part of the west half of the community garden, which will be available by March 1st if they need that space. They're uncertain if they're going to need any, if all of that, yet it's important that if they're going to use it, that they're going to pay for that use because it is public property and that that's reviewed and approved by you.
Any questions? Thoughts?
And none of these. Review this with our staff and administration of the departments, and there is one... There's a couple utility boxes in the right of way, very similar to what was in the other staging area. And then just in this yellow area here, there's a spigot or faucet for the community garden. There where they need to, you know...
Protect the sidewalk or replace broken...
Traveling back and forth. Included in the agreement as well.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, I would look for a motion to approve the licensing agreement. Motion? Motion by Christensen.
Second.
Second by Blatt.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Okay, item 4B is to review Resolution 2474 regarding retirement of uncollected debts.
This, we're just doing some house cleaning. We spoke with our auditors, and there are several old invoices that are mentioned in the document, Resolution 2474. They go back to 2016, 17, 18. Most of those are nuisance abatements where we've had to go onto the property and clean or mow. And those properties have either come back to the city or they have waived... I mean, the people that are buying those properties, we've waived them having to pay for those. We just need to pass a resolution that we can retire those uncollected debts. And the next half of that, if you could slide that up a little bit, Gene, is there's an inaccurate invoice that accidentally went out. And that was for... It was a bill to HMU. And so this was back in 2018, and HMU actually installed water service out at J.J. Jensen for our new restrooms. And the invoice that came in, or what was told came in, was water service. So we billed them because for reimbursement of water. Well, we were talking with Jenny, we got it all straightened out. It's not a reimbursable expense. They did the work, they performed the work. You know, they provided the equipment and the items needed to install that water service. So that's actually an inaccurate invoice. Instead of just voiding it, the auditors wanted it included in this document so that everybody was understanding of what actually happened. Do you have anything to add to that, Gene?
No, just cleaning up and very accurate.
Is the hanger rental tenant, are they no longer a tenant there?
They are, and the... That one is specific to... Due to a family dispute involving a trust, and there was a period of 30 days when all this was... And so that's what that relates to, is one month. But still a tenant, been a long-term tenant, and was involved in separating...
I'm surprised to see that, that's what I...
Right?
Okay.
And you can see it's also from '18, and consulting with the city attorney as well to get further involved in that trust and the family dispute going on at this point to go back.
It'd cost more than...
Yes, sir.
You'd collect. Okay. Any questions regarding these items? Okay, if none, then I would look for a motion to approve Resolution 2474 to retire these and get Jane's books all cleaned up.
No motion?
Motion by Rudolph. Second by Shaven.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Very good. Item 4C then is to review the change order on the Seventh Street Bridge project. And that change order is for $15,786.82. And there was a very detailed explanation in the packet about that. Anything, I mean, just final bits and pieces?
Yes, on two items I would want to reconfirm with you is that we, with the DOT project and with our partners with JEO, mine was slipping me, but our engineering firm, we were aware that the closeout processes take quite a while. And so this is getting us very near to all the final closeout, although the project's been done, the bridge has been in use, but the many closeout items. This change order, which is the second and final change order, relates to all the materials and quantities adjustments that actually were, you know, the item price stayed the same, it's just the amount of quantity is used, either from piping to concrete to mulching. We did a little more of this and less of that. It reflects the change, excuse me, the penalty days. And over the entire project, the adjustment amount was less than 3.5%. So on a couple hundred thousand dollar project and coming in anywhere under 10%, you're doing pretty well. And in this case, it was 3.5%. This is the final change order and closeout. Then the final item we'll then prove, probably another four to five weeks, we'll be paying out the retainage. And then our engineer has had some additional costs, and they're requesting some. I'm going to come to you with a proposal not to pay all of that, because I think they own some of that as well. But this is on the... I'm going to recommend you 2,000 of what they're requesting more than that. That's a future meeting. So any questions that you may have for me?
Okay, seeing no questions, then I'd look for a motion to approve the change order number two.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, motion by Kroger and the second by Blatt.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is to review the fiscal year 2021 annual urban renewal report.
This is an annual report that's required by the state of Iowa, and it is a... This one, as well as the next item on the agenda, are recaps of what was actually spent in those areas. So this urban renewal report has to do with all of our tip area, monies that we've spent in those areas. And it's just... It's a recording of pretty much everything that was spent. So, I mean, it was budgeted for, it was spent, and this is telling the state of Iowa that this is what indeed we spent our money on, what we budgeted our money on. And this ties back to our other reports that we do, and so they have ways to track it all. So it's just a way for them, for transparency for everybody, for them. And sometimes urban renewal areas are misused, and so this is their way of keeping track of the cities and making sure that those monies are spent correctly.
Okay, this is time for the quiz on this report then, so...
You go first.
Two thirty-eight.
If not, then I'd look for a motion to approve the urban renewal report.
Motion.
Motion by Christensen.
Second.
Second by Rudolph.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we will review the 2021 annual financial report.
This is again, an annual report that is due to the state of Iowa. And this is a reporting of everything that we've budgeted. So it breaks it down by department, by function, by revenue, by expense. And, you know, if the budget was amended, what was the amendment? And our auditors rely heavily on these reports, and they're required to be published in the paper. The... And it's a formality that we have to do every year, is report what we actually spent. This is money that was approved by the council when we went through our budget process. And it's a recap of what was already spent.
Of all the reports we get, that's probably the one that I like to keep on file for the most, because it's just a good overview of what we actually did.
It is, and it breaks it down, it breaks it down in, you know, different levels as the report goes on. So it is an interesting report.
Any questions or comments regarding this report? If not, then I'd look for a motion to approve the 2021 annual financial report.
Motion?
Motion by Kroger.
Second.
Second by Shaven.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item 4F then, review and file Parks and Recreation, minutes from November 9th meeting. Questions regarding that? It's an active board. So I have a motion then to brief receiving file.
Motion?
Motion by Kroger.
Second.
Second by Rudolph.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Very good. And out of that meeting, and a couple of meetings prior to that even, we need to review the recommended off-street parking along J.J. Jensen Park there on Cyclone Avenue. So I bet you Gene's got a map for us to take a look at.
In the minutes you just approved from the park board, one of the recommendation was from those minutes, this was in your packet. I will do my best to rotate and expand that. I think most of you have seen versions of this. The right side picture is an aerial from Beacon. The proposed batting and fielding facility from the nonprofit group is a 100-by-100 facility. Based upon review, approval of their agreement, it was discussed that we should do further study on the north side parking on Cyclone Avenue to improve safety. After looking at various options, this is the proposal that's been designed, vetted, reviewed with school, as well as the park board, and that includes a 60-by-200 parking area with the entrance coming off of Cyclone, as depicted here with the yellow lanes. In summary, on the right side here is a graphical representation. You've got a 24-foot center aisle, you can accommodate 44 parking spaces per Sudehouse guidelines. If you were to maximize the parking spaces on the north side of Cyclone Avenue, you're getting 48 spaces there. So this is very equivalent if you're moving all the parking off-street to accommodate for that. The other item with this is, without approaching too much more on the field four, if in the future it's determined that we want to expand that parking area, it's very easy to expand this to the west. We've designed it with ensuring drainage, and then the entrance drive area would be concrete, and then the rest of it, we would use millings.
Comments? Any questions?
So that would mean if we built this parking, that means no parking on Cyclone Avenue, correct?
Yes, that still needs to be proposed, and we would come back to you now, or part of, we would propose a new ordinance. So I think we were going to wait until we have this parking established, correct, before we do a way with parking on Cyclone.
And is this parking lot part of their building project, or is that city responsibility?
That would be city responsibility. Our investment in that will be some storm tube, concrete from the drive, excuse me, drive to the sidewalk, and then millings, which we already have in stockpile. So going to say rough estimate, 3,000 or less. I don't know the exact concrete cost, so don't...
Well, I'm writing it down, so that's...
I'll give you the exact number of the concrete. I know the tubing and storm tubing was less than 500 bucks, so we're not talking a huge amount of concrete to connect over to the sidewalk. And it'll be a new sidewalk area as well.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, then I would...
And we think it's a good design, and we think it's actually coming together quite nicely.
Yeah, kind of evolved over a few meetings. So it's a good discussion.
Field four has very minimal usage as well, so we're not losing a heavily used field.
That fence is gone, right?
There were, just to make sure, one additional comment to this. And just last week was down there with a few of our staff late in the afternoon, and as we were evaluating the area, et cetera, we all had our vehicles parked on the north side, which is allows for parking right now, correct? And in fact, I even had my hazards on, and I was at least a third to a half off of the road. But just in the time we were there, which had three or four pieces of ag equipment go by, it's a very busy time with ag, right? One of them was not so pleased that we had a few vehicles parked on the north side of the road. So case in point, that they were like, you know, one of them was quite emphatic, is get these vehicles out of here, legally parked, but it does become quite congested. So you can just imagine in the summertime with ballgames going on, and again, it's worked well for years, but good time to take another look at it in another lens and improve safety when we can. This seems like a great solution.
Okay.
Enough of my stories.
With that, I will look for a motion then to approve the off-street parking as recommended by the Parks and Rec Board.
Subsumed.
Motion by Shaven.
Second.
Second by Christensen.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 4G then is to review the closure of the Fourth Street Bridge through April 5th, 2022, during the winter months. Gene, you want to...
It should be April 15th, Mayor.
April 15th.
Might remove it before then. Excuse me, this is identical to last year. The intent is to keep traffic off of that structure through the winter months, specifically our plows that are heavier. It worked fine last year. We do continue to evaluate replacement options, just aren't quite there yet, but if we could minimize additional traffic over there and continue to preserve what's there, we definitely should.
If there are no questions regarding this, I'll look for a motion to approve that closure through April 15th.
Subsumed.
Motion by Blatt?
Second.
Second by Shaven, I think.
Roll call Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Okay, city administrators report. Take it away, Gene.
A few additional items. Congratulations, kudos to Ian Erickson. Ian joined our team just about a year ago at our wastewater plant, and in the past few weeks, he's obtained his grade-one certification as an operator. And took him a few cuts at the plate to pass that test, yet that's not unheard of. So congrats to Ian Erickson. He'll then, as he continues to gain more experience with ours and CEUs, then he'll... I'm not sure exactly when he'll be eligible to test for his grade-two, but out at some point in the future as well. Congrats to Ian. The community garden, just report back to you all in the public that with Iowa State Extension, they're handling with doing sign-ups and payment and keys and providing tips and gardening expertise. That seemed to go very well this year. Really appreciate their partnership. Certainly plan to continue that as the agreement was... Does not need to be renewed annually, but automatically renew unless changed otherwise. Did any of you have feedback? Any of you have feedback? I guess just from community members, others about the garden. As I said, it seemed to work real well. The few minor issues that tend to come up each year, they were able to handle. Someone might be, may not be weeding properly or getting any weeding done at all, those types of things. But that worked well. We do continue to have an open part-time position at the library with primarily focusing on youth service clerk. They, it's about a 20, 25-hour-per-week position. So I did see that advertised in the paper, once again, out on social media. And anytime we can help broadcast that to the public. We have a top-notch library, a great team there. So if anyone wants to join the library and help develop programs and work with youth, please contact them. The house on Seventh Street, Cross and Post Office, is being proposed to move. That's the house between Schumacher Chiropractic and Jacobs. And we met with the contractor, Burger Construction, the post office, as well as the owner of the house, which is Jacobs, continuing some pre-planning. And that's intended to move the second week of December. In the next council agenda, you will see requests for a street closing for one or two days. But we're talking through all those plans because it will be a minor disruption. Yet that home is being proposed, or will be relocated, from Seventh Street down to Fifth and Main. And that will be a part of the December 7th council meeting. And the last time I had is just one brief, had a team, team-building experience with a few of us out in the community recently, where, I don't know if this shows up very well. Yet some of us served last week at the community kitchen. So a few of our staff were out there. Wasn't, wasn't too, too challenging, but a great opportunity to put our team out in the public and serve in any way we can.
It doesn't have anything to do with the reason they're no longer going to be serving these.
Yeah, Todd may, maybe he has something on that, but I don't know. They're at least committed through January, is the last I've heard. Between, I believe, some staffing and some funding, but I believe it's maybe more staffing. Those are my primary updates. And continue to, each day we can get through without any precipitation or snow. And today felt like a nice, almost like teaser of spring, maybe, but haven't got through winter yet. The team's ready and the plows are ready.
Questions for Gene? Okay, thank you very much. For my report tonight, in case I haven't already done it, I would like to thank and congratulate the three council members who ran for another term this year. Appreciate all the time you guys put in on council, all the homework and meetings and things. So along with the other council members, I think this is a really strong unit. So just appreciate all your time for that. That's all I've got tonight.
It probably goes reciprocal back to yourself, by the way. Very appreciative for, there's a lot of things, a lot of meetings, we know you guys, who yourself, I should say, participate in by all means, right?
Yep, thank you. Todd Gleene with Shelby County Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. We are jumping, we'll feed into holiday celebrations this year. So the first one that'll be coming up will be down on the downtown square on the evening of Shop Small Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Had a great turnout this past weekend of volunteers to help us get some of the lights set up. And I know they were doing some finishing touches today. Believe it is tomorrow morning, as long as weather permits and wind permits and all that other stuff, that you'll see the tree going up down there on the square. And so we're just looking forward. Santa's already told me that he's excited about coming. He told me he really enjoyed the ride up and down every street in the city of Harlan last year, but I told him we're not going to, you know, I said if he wants to tell his chauffeur to take a little wide swing before he gets downtown, but, you know, we're going to go back to doing it on the square. So looking forward to that. And the Girl Scouts have volunteered to help us with sugar cookies and hot chocolate, handing them out that night. So should be a great night, hope all the families do come back out. About other small things, we'll have Santa in the cabins at the Shelby County Historical Museum again. That'll be on December 9th, that's a Thursday evening. And then he'll come back one more time. We try to get the site stuff all done, because I know he gets busy after about the 15th of December. So on the 11th, we'll have him here, and we will go to the individual communities throughout the county and have Santa Claus come into town. So staff is getting posters made, things purchased, twinkles in their eyes. They're already go for the holiday season, so.
Good deal. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Any questions for Todd? I know the fire department had a volunteer step up just like that last night to chauffeur, so he's got a driver. Ken Webber with HMU.
Yes, thank you. Couple things going on. We're coordinating the start date for our pressure filter number one, the media replacement project. We're also continuing to remove some of the poles as they're vacated by carriers around town. So making a little progress there. Other than that, just trying to finish up end-of-year stuff before the snow flies. And in the midst of all that, then, the crews are working with the city and others on decorations on the streetlights and the lighting if we're on the square, so.
Appreciate the staff that sit from the city and HMU, all do all the decorating for the holidays. Hopefully the weather cooperates for them, and they're not out there in that too nasty weather to get that done, so. Any comments from the other council members tonight? Okay, seeing none. I don't believe there's anybody from the public realm that has any comments, so I will adjourn the meeting.
Go Cyclones.
Go Cyclones, so.
Yes.